Good evening, and welcome to our Planning Commission meeting of July 19, 2023. It's good to see everybody. Our agenda this evening includes commission business, the deferral of one zoning application for an additional public hearing, the conduct of two first-time public hearings, and the conduct of a second public hearing. The first and second public hearings is new for us, and over time, I think everybody will get used to the idea, but I won't spend the time right now on explaining that. One item on tonight's agenda was scheduled for the commission to decide whether or not to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. However, recently enacted state statutory language, this is the one public hearing versus two public hearings, recently enacted state statutory language regarding public notice and hearing requirements that affects how the commission and the board addresses future land use matters. For this reason, this item that will be put before us will be scheduled for an additional public hearing on July 27. An additional hearing for this application is being established out of an abundance of caution. Commissioner Cortina, I believe you have a motion regarding the Mary H. Day zoning case in Braddock District?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move to defer consideration of RZ 2021-Br-018 and FDP 2021-Br-018 for an additional public hearing on July 27, 2023. Any testimony that was provided at the first public hearing on June 21, 2023 will be included as part of the record, and persons who testified at the first hearing are already on the record and do not need to testify again at the additional hearing, but they may. Thank you.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Cortina and seconded by Commissioner Sargent and Olfelder.
Murphy.
Murphy, apologies. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cortina. Does any commissioner have any other business to address in our business portion of the agenda? Seeing there's no other business, then I close the commission business. I ask Secretary Spain to set the order of tonight's agenda.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have three hearings, three public hearings. The first one is in the Springfield District. It is SE 2022-SP-00036 Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative Henderson Road. The second hearing will be R in the Franconia District. It is RZ/FDP 2022-Le-0024 6325 Brandon Avenue LLC. The third hearing for the evening is in the Hunnamale District. It is PA 2020-III-UP1 Reston Comprehensive Plan Study.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Without objection, we will now move on to our three public hearings. Individuals wishing to provide testimony have a number of options. They can testify here in person, or they can provide testimony by phone or YouTube video. At the designated point in the public hearing, I will call for any speakers from the speakers' list, and they will either come forward, or their video will be shown, or they will be connected by telephone. There will then be an opportunity for anyone else who would like to speak to the application to come down to the podium or to call in on a number that will be provided on the screen. Speakers testifying via video must sign up and submit their video no later than 9:00 a.m. on the day prior to the hearing, and that, of course, would be yesterday, Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. for this hearing. For all testimony, you are given five minutes to speak as an individual. If you are a spokesperson for a group, you are given 10 minutes. Should you decide during the public hearing that you wish to be heard and did not previously sign up to do so, you will be permitted three minutes to speak. The first public hearing this evening is SE 2022-SP-00036 Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative in the Springfield District. Would a representative of the applicant please come forward, identify yourself for the record, and reaffirm the affidavit?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jim Mazanis from the law firm Blanket Chipping Keith on behalf of Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative, and I reaffirm the affidavit.
Thank you, Mr. Mazanis.
Thank you.
Are there any disclosures from the commission? Seeing there's no disclosures, may we have a staff report, please, Mr. Martinez? Or not Mr. Martinez?
It's all right.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Damaris Martinez from the Department of Planning and Development. The applicant, Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative, is requesting a special exception to permit the addition of a 95-foot-tall transmission pole within an existing electric The pole would be located within the Moore Substation Compound in Clifton, south of the intersection of Clifton Road and Henderson Road. On April 19, 1968, the former Prince William Electric Cooperative, Inc., obtained the subject property for substation use. According to historical images, the Moore Electrical Substation was constructed in 1972 by right prior to the zoning ordinance requirements for special exception approval. So the site is 3,400, 34,848 square feet, and is developed with a substation in the center of the site, which is enclosed within a compound area delineated by a 10-foot-high chain-link fence. Access to the site is provided on the southeast side of the site from Henderson Road, and existing parking is provided at the entrance on a gravel access road. NOVAC proposes a transmission tower to enhance private network communication and provide increased distribution control, outage notification, and meter communication. The tower is designed as an 85-foot-tall steel pole with an additional 10-foot-tall lightning rod on top for a total height of 95 feet from the ground floor. Occasional in-person maintenance and repair is expected. And yesterday, revised development conditions were circulated to the Planning Commission. A landscaping condition was added to ensure landscaping is provided, consistent with that shown on the SE plat, and no other changes were made. Staff finds the proposal to add an accessory 95-foot-tall transmission pole to an existing electric substation is in harmony with the comprehensive plan and the applicable zoning ordinance provisions. Staff recommends approval of the SE 2022-SP-00036, subject to the proposed development conditions now dated July 13, 2023. As well, staff recommends approval of the transitional screening modification and waiver of barrier requirements to that shown on the SE plat and as conditioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. As I stated earlier, my name is Jim Mazanis. I represent NOVAC in regard to the special exception application. With me here at tonight's hearing are Claire Bargenstock, Jake Holmes, and Dan Swingle from NOVAC.
Welcome.
I'd first like to thank the staff and Ms. Martinez for a very thorough presentation, their diligent work on the application of this matter. Much of the details of the application have been provided by staff, so I'll just take some time to reiterate some points here and provide some additional visuals as well. The purpose of the installation of this transmissions pole is to enhance communications within NOVAC on its private network relating to distribution, device control, outage notification, and meter communications. This will be a 95-feet-above-ground steel pole with an antenna and a lightning rod, and it'll be located wholly within the existing substation. This substation was developed on the site in 1968 to provide electric service, electric power service, to customers, and that was prior to the zoning ordinance amendment, ordinance requirement, I should say, for special exception approval. The addition of this transmission pole will be a great benefit to NOVAC customers and a minimal impact to the surrounding properties. And now, as shown on Slide 3 here, the site location is on Henderson Road. That's in Clifton. It's a low-density residential area, rural area in the RC District. It's within the Springfield Magisterial District. It's rural in nature, as mentioned. There's a cemetery, Clifton Cemetery, that's across the street from the property. And now, to show some additional views of the site, the first photo that's on Slide 4 is an aerial photo here that's taken from Google, in which you could see the site that's just south of Clifton Road across from the Clifton Cemetery. And the next photo I have here on Slide 5 shows a front view of the substation with the existing signage. So this substation's been here for many years and is operating. There'd be no changes to any of the existing equipment or anything like that as part of this project. Slide 6 here is a view of the substation from across Henderson Road. We can see the placard that's advertising the hearing for tonight, and the proposed 15-foot-wide landscaping strip that's part of the application as well would be in that area behind where the truck is parked. So there's some additional screening there to be in front of the substation as part of this application. Slide 7 here is a view of the substation showing the approximate location of where the proposed pole would be installed, which would be that empty space inside the right corner of the perimeter fence there. If you see the open area right there is where that pole would be installed. And then Slide 8 here is just a closer view of the location, getting a better view to see where the pole would be put into the ground. Slide 9 is a view of the cemetery that's across Henderson Road, looking from the substation, showing the rural nature of the surrounding properties here. Slide 10, we have a colorized version of the special exception plat emphasizing in red the proposed pole location, again, within the existing substation. Slide 11 will show you when constructed and installed, this is what the pole will look like, steel rod with the lightning rod untached to the top of it. And another photo as well, you'll see the line drawn in yellow there to the pole that's installed, and just showing how it blends in with the rest of the substation with the character and design of the pole. Now, this application, members of the Planning Commission, is consistent with the policy plan's goal of co-location of a light utility use to reduce visual impact to the area. There's going to be no disturbance to the site. The existing substation equipment will remain intact, and the pole represents the second-to-last one necessary for NOVAC's new monitoring system that they have with the last pole being presented before the Planning Commission in September. So this is a very important part of that project, as I mentioned, second-to-last piece of it. And the development conditions that have been submitted by staff, those all have been acceptable and approved by NOVAC, and we'd ask that you vote to recommend approval of this application, and thank you for your time this evening. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Mazanis. Any questions from commissioners? This is a public hearing. We have no listed speakers. Is there anyone in the auditorium who would like to speak to this application? Is there anyone on the phone?
Jake Caprletti, Clerk of the Planning Commission, there's no one on the line.
I will now close the public hearing and recognize Commissioner Murphy for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, this is a very straightforward application. Let me just read a little introductory remarks to go into the verbatim. The applicant, Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative, NOVAC, requests approval of a special exception to permit the addition of a 95-foot-tall transmission pole in the existing compound area of the Moore Electrical Substation located at 12465A Henderson Road. The site is zoned RC Residential Conservation District and Water Supply Protection Overlay District. It is also currently an unmanned facility that is operational 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with weekly and monthly maintenance and inspections. This is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the current zoning ordinances, and I'm going to move approval, but before I do, I believe I still have to call up representatives with the applicant. Mr. Morris, is that true, to ask them to reaffirm their support of the development conditions?
Yes.
Sir, would you please come forward and identify yourself for the record, and I'd like to know, one, have you read the development conditions dated the 13th, and do you understand them, and will you abide by them?
Yes. James Mazanis, on behalf of the applicant, again, Northern Virginia Electric Cooperative. We have read the proposed development conditions, and they are acceptable to NOVAC.
I was hoping you'd say that.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Therefore, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of SE 2022-SP-00036, subject to the proposed revised development conditions dated July 13, 2023.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Olfelder. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thanks to NOVAC for your cooperation. Ms. Martinez, for a great, great report. Appreciate it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman Murphy, Kathy Belgium here with Zoning Evaluation Division. We did neglect to add the motion regarding the waivers and modifications of the transitional screening and barrier, if we could address that.
Be my guest.
Well, Commissioner Murphy has to make that motion. Is it available to Commissioner Murphy?
Standby.
Okay.
It's on the cover page of the staff report. It's approval of a modification of the transitional screening and waiver of the barrier requirements to that shown on the SE plat.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that it approves the modification of the transitional screening and the waiver of the barrier requirements that are shown on the SE plat.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Olfelder. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy, it's good to have you back.
It's good to be back, and I haven't found all the changes yet, but it is good to be I'm working on it, though.
I know. I know. The next public hearing of the evening is RZ/FDP 2022-Le-0024-6325 Brandon Avenue LLC in Franconia District. Would a representative of the applicant please come forward, identify yourself for the record, and reaffirm the affidavit?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lynn Strobel. I represent the applicant, and I reaffirm the affidavit that is dated June 9, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strobel. Are there any disclosures from the commission? Seeing no disclosures, may we have the staff report, please, Ms. Martinez? No?
Mr. Fountain?
I'm working off a script. You don't look like Ms. Martinez. Mr. Fountain?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I am Zach Fountain with the Department of Planning and Development. On June 27, 2023, the Board of Supervisors adopted amendment to the comprehensive plan, which added an option for self-storage use up to 175,000 square feet with ground floor uses at the subject property, subject to specific conditions. The applicant seeks to rezone the subject property from the C6, CRD, HC, and SC districts to the PDC, CRD, HC, and SC districts to implement this plan option. The subject property is located within the Springfield CBC. The site consists of two parcels located at the northeastern corner of the intersection of Brandon Avenue and Commerce Street, directly west of I-95. Parcel 5C1 is approximately 2.9 acres and is developed with a four-story, 87,000-square-foot hotel that was constructed in 2003. Parcel 5C2 is approximately 1.4 acres and is developed with a gravel surface parking lot and an underground stormwater management facility that serves the adjacent hotel. This parcel has no frontage along Brandon Avenue but is accessible by an existing service drive connected to Brandon Avenue and Augusta Drive, which is a private street. The applicant is seeking to rezone the subject property from the C6 district to the PDC district to develop a 167,000-square-foot self-storage facility on Parcel 5C2. The existing hotel and its surface parking lot located on Parcel 5C3 will remain unaffected. Overall, the proposed floor area ratio of the site would be 1.35. The proposed self-storage facility building is sited 13 feet from the proposed curb and gutter to create an urban edge. It also, it would include a leasing office of approximately 1,125 square feet, featuring a small retail display area and an employee break room. The ground floor will also include 2,700 square feet to be used for retail, office, or public and community uses. While specific tenants or organizations for the ground floor have not yet been determined, the applicant has proffered for this ground floor space to be prioritized for nonprofit workforce development and any other public and community uses permitted in the PDC district. A 1,200-square-foot publicly accessible plaza is proposed near the intersection of Brandon Avenue and Commerce Street. This area of the site would be improved with raised planters, perennial and ornamental grass planting beds, and public art. The applicant has proffered to record a public access easement over this space. The applicant also proposes to provide benches, lighting, and landscaping planters along the proposed ground floor retail space of the public storage building. The applicant has designed the self-storage building to have the appearance of an office building, achieving this through the use of false facades, windows, and mansard roof elements. The building materials will include exterior insulated finishing systems, siding, brick, masonry, and glass. It's also important to highlight that the applicant has committed to provide a missing sidewalk connection along Augusta Drive, bicycle parking spaces, and EV charging station, implement bird-friendly design elements, and achieve green building certification. Overall, staff finds this application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the applicable zoning ordinance provisions. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning and conceptual development plan applications, subject to the execution of the proffers dated July 19, 2023. Staff also recommends approval of the requested FDP application and the requested modifications referenced in the handout dated July 19, 2023. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain. May we have the applicant, please, presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Lynn Strobel, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to walk you through. I'll try not to be too repetitive of the staff, but I do want to share a couple of features of this particular proposed development. I will say that I have representatives here with me this evening from the contract purchaser, the civil engineering firm, the architectural firm, and the traffic consultant, so hopefully between all of us, we can answer any questions that you might have. As Mr. Fountain described, these are two parcels that are located in Springfield. They are adjacent to Interstate 395. They were rezoned together and ultimately approved for an extended-stay hotel and a freestanding restaurant. The parcel that we're discussing primarily this evening is the parcel that is located closest to the highway. Parcel 5C1 that was approved for a hotel has been developed. A hotel was constructed on that site in about 2003, so it's been there for a good long time. It is well-maintained, and I think it adds to the central business district in Springfield. Unfortunately, Parcel 5C2, which is the adjacent parcel, is vacant. It's been vacant now for over 25 years, and it has some challenges. I think that's why it remains undeveloped. Some of those challenges include limited visibility, and also, it is adjacent to the highway. The current owners of the property purchased the property, I'd say, I think it's about four or five years ago, and when they did, they had a vision that they could redevelop this property in Springfield, and after a good amount of study, they came to the conclusion that a self-storage facility may be the best use. And with that, they started working on that vision. I've been working with them, pursuing that vision now for probably close to four years. We first filed an amendment to the comprehensive plan in December of 2019, and the property may look familiar to you because I was here on that plan amendment several weeks ago, and that was approved by the board. They also proceeded with the rezoning, and they've been working with the contract purchaser, who is an experienced operator of self-storage facilities and has really worked very hard on this proposal that's before you tonight. So what is being proposed is a single building for self-storage. It's on about 1.43 acres. It is seven stories, and the one thing that I will spend a little bit of time talking about in my presentation is the first floor. We started talking with the community, with the county staff, and there was a real desire to activate that, and I think that we're doing that in a unique way. As with most applications in Fairfax County, one of the first things we looked at was traffic, and I'm pleased to say that when looking at the traffic associated with self-storage, it is very little. It compares very favorably, not only to the currently approved use, which was a restaurant in this bar chart, it's the green, but also to the comprehensive plan prior to its amendment, which is the blue. You can see the yellow is the self-storage, so it will have very little impact on the surrounding roads, and I think that was something that was deemed to be desirable by the surrounding community. We also spent a lot of time working on the pedestrian network. I won't go into details, but as was mentioned by Mr. Fountain, we are providing sidewalks, we're providing bike lanes and sharrows to improve connectivity in this area. So what are we proposing? We are proposing a self-storage building with the whole goal of it not looking like self-storage. So that is the objective that we had. We worked very closely with the Springfield Civic Association and with staff, and you can see that this building is going to look very much like an office building. It has the fenestration and roof treatments and materials that look like an office building. We've done our best to reduce the massing and really done this in a way that's going to make this an attractive addition to the downtown of Springfield. These are just its four-sided architecture. This is what the building would look like on all four sides. We've provided additional improvements, not just to our site, but to the adjacent site. This is the corner of Brandon Avenue and Commerce in front of the hotel. We're improving that plaza. It's going to be a gathering space that's going to have place-making features such as benches and landscaping and artwork, and again, all in an effort to improve this part of downtown Springfield. Again, I won't go through each of these, but just know that this is going to be a well-operated and a high-quality facility. As I mentioned, it has four-sided architecture, it has climate control, and it's not 24 hours a day. I think that was a community concern early on, that there are hours of operation for employees but also for access by customers, and of course, we will have state-of-the-art security. So let's talk about that first floor, and the first floor was something that we were asked to activate, to make that a benefit to the community, and so we are activating that streetscape by providing area that can be leased by various tenants. We are providing priority to community and public uses, and I think that that, hopefully, is something that's going to be a real benefit. We are providing discounted lease rates to local small-business owners, nonprofits, and public users, and those nonprofits, we think, again, will add to the community of Springfield and hopefully serve as a catalyst for redevelopment in this area. And I would just note that the contract purchaser has done this before in other locations, so they know what they're doing, they have experience, and I think this is really going to turn out very nicely. So with that, I'm going to just close out by saying that we have a robust proffer package like we always do when we come before you with the rezoning. We are agreeing to things like sustainable design. We have EV charging stations, as I mentioned, quality architectural design, and, you know, a lot of those proffers you're going to see, you typically see in rezoning applications. This went numerous times to the Franconia District Land Use Committee, not only as a plan amendment but as a rezoning. I'm pleased to say that they recommended approval of both, and as I mentioned, the plan amendment was approved by the board just a couple weeks ago on June 27. The staff report also recommends approval, and I'd ask for your favorable consideration tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strobel. Are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Lagana?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to set, revoice the context that I had when we discussed the plan amendment for this, think it'd just be helpful, and then turn it over to the commissioners for any questions. It's unique that we have a self-storage facility and a CBC. You normally don't see that, right? How this came to be was in, I think it was early 2020, we, myself and Supervisor Lusk had met with Ms. Strobel over this application, and we heard the presentation, we talked through it. It looked nice. You seemed to have a good, a great client or partner, if you will, and insight. But what, the discussion after you left was, how can we catalyze investment in Springfield where there hasn't really been any? And how could we use this as an opportunity to do that? So you'll see that this isn't just a self-storage facility. We have public art dedication. We were, we worked very hard on the design on this. I think Insights has gone to the Springfield Civic Association for the last two years, it seems like. God bless them and all parties involved. And I think that the intention here, though, was to truly create something unique. Okay, we got a self-storage facility, that's great. What else can we do here to really drive some benefit in an area where there's an over-concentration of low-density retail, which as we know, it's kind of a mixed bag right now, is probably a good way to put it, and that we wanted to have something that could truly have some activity around it, spruce up the immediate area. We've got this sort of Stalin-esque architecture to the left with the mini skyscraper, and we've got a lot of gray in the area. And so how do you add some, how do you add some color? In addition to that, Supervisor Lusk, as many of you know and hear, just recently finished the Wish Center, which is the Workforce Innovation Skills Hub on Richmond Highway. And it's adjacent to the Audubon Manufactured Home Community. And it's been enormously successful. And the intention of the Wish Center, for folks in the audience that haven't heard of it, in our part of the county, it teaches carpentry, it teaches robotics, it teaches skills to students, kids, adults. Anyone that wants to take the classes can go to the Workforce Innovation Skills Hub and get trained, and then hopefully start their own businesses. And the intention with this particular site is that perhaps in partnership with a local nonprofit or a Chamber of Commerce, I think we've left that open because we still have some decisions to make, that this could be a place where some of the graduates from the Wish Center could set up shop in an office space or a workspace that is priced at a little bit lower of a rate for them, so they can graduate from their program and then hopefully leave this office and graduate and move on to something else. And so when Ms. Strobel is speaking about the catalyst and what that vacant space means, that's really what she's referring to, was this vision that Supervisor Lusk had had. And I hope, you know, I know we're still coloring the lines on that, but I'm hopeful that with this condition, you know, we'll be able to meet that. The other thing, too, was, I want to stress, it was not just the appearance of this particular place, but it was also the connections and then coming over to Commerce Street. The plaza that Ms. Strobel mentioned in her report that's going to be improved is sort of an entry point into Springfield. And so it's a way, it's a way to make a statement and show some, I think, new, clear improvements to Springfield just as you come in. And like we said, this is an area of the county that hasn't seen a lot of new development in a long time. And so this was really an opportunity for us, was not just how we show something new, but how do we plant roots and make it successful in the long term? So with that, Mr. Chairman, I just, it's been four years that we've worked on this, and this was originally an SSPA nomination. It went into study, then it came back. And so it can be lengthy and burdensome, but I also think we've shown that as a county, we can be adaptable and flexible and really kind of find the best solution when, you know, otherwise, situation may dictate otherwise. So with that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Cortina?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I really like the ground floor retail, or whatever it will be, ground floor nonprofit area. And I will say to my fellow commissioners, if you get a chance to go on a tour of this Wish Center on Route 1, it really is inspiring, like it makes you want to step up and do something in every single district. It's a wonderful location, and it's a great opportunity. And teaching the trades, you know, is helping people to have a meaningful job experience and career and employment. So I had a couple of questions. So anyway, I really like doing this. Lidl, I think, is about the only new investment in a while, and of course, the Great American Restaurant that's been there for quite a while. But I think this would spur some attention and some future development. So there's a mention there of the underground utilities that was, you know, that was not done, but on that side of the street, there's a hotel that's already built, so it's not like you're touching that area.
That's right.
Okay. That was one question. And I want to commend the applicant for taking on the maintenance, too, picking up trash that tends to fly all over that part of Springfield. So thank you for that. I don't know where it comes off 95 or wherever. And then just one last question. On the proffers, there's a proffer for stormwater, no surprise that I'm asking about this, but it does not reinforce or doesn't hit any of the targets in the comprehensive plan. It just says "in general conformance."
Okay.
So I would just like to, you know, with this new process that we have where we don't want to delay the cases that ends up being a 30-day delay, but I would like to just add the word "in substantial," or you could even have the "general conformance," but it's with the runoff reduction and water quality performance shown on Sheet C9. And I don't know if you are amenable to...
Be happy to take a look at that. We can insert that language between Planning Commission and Board.
Yeah, because what it says right now is to meet the Fairfax County requirements, but that's not what the application says, that you're going above those requirements. The comp plan says it's going above the requirements, but the proffer says we reserve the right to meet the requirements.
We'll work on that proffer.
So with that item, I don't have any other concerns. I'm really happy to see, I can't believe I'm saying I'm happy to see self-storage, but I'm happy to see self-storage in this area. It's needed. It seems to be the only office that's going up these days, but I think it's really going to be an enhancement. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner Cortina. I would just want to add my own support for and admiration for this effort. I remember back when this first came before us, and there was just a lot of strum and drum about having a storage facility in this location as opposed to other economic opportunities. And what you've created is something that I think will be a catalyst, and I admire that. I particularly liked the activation at the first level. Kudos Commissioner Lagana and Supervisor Lusk, the applicant and staff, on making this happen. So I fully support it. This is a public hearing. We have no listed speakers. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application?
We did have one. Mr. Matt Mahaffrey?
Oh, I apologize. Is there?
Yes. Sorry.
Mr. Mahaffey?
Yes.
You're here representing BGP Enterprises?
Yes.
You have 10 minutes, sir.
Hi. Good evening. My name is John Mahaffey. I'm a partner at BGP. It's a commercial real estate investment company, actually, in the Stalin-esque building. That's next, that's mine.
No, I was talking about the other one.
The one to the left?
Talking about the little skyscraper.
Oh, the tall one, yeah. Okay. Oh, I own the other one. 6225 Brandon Avenue.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah. So Springfield Corporate Center, it's a 137,000-square-foot multi-tenant office building located 6225 Brandon Avenue, and it's directly across the street from the subject's site. So Springfield Corporate Center, 98.6% leased to 21 tenants ranging from publicly traded Fortune 500 company, a branch of the world's largest credit union, a company headquarters with over 200 employees on site, and numerous companies that provide services to the local community. And with that, I ask that the council delay the approval and have the applicant go back to the drawing board to consider the following. One, increase the size of the enclosed loading area. And two, increase the number of loading spaces from three to five inside the enclosed loading area for the following reasons. Regarding the location and the size of the enclosed loading area, first, the location of the loading area will adversely impact our office building, considering approximately one-third of our tenants will have a direct line of sight into the loading area. And as a result, the office suites with visibility into the applicant's loading area will be less attractive to current and future tenants. This is evidenced by the fact that an office suite in our building that overlooks the loading dock that is in our building that has remained vacant for 10-plus years because no tenants want to lease space with visibility directly into a loading area. Second, the loading area is inadequately screened under the current proposed plan because there's a direct line of sight into the loading area where box trucks will be parked. The garage loading door will be ineffective, and it's unrealistic to think that a garage door to an active loading area will provide adequate screening. Third, the service road will essentially become a truck court with box trucks driving past the loading garage door and then back in the loading area. To minimize the inevitable adverse impact on our building, the appropriate loading area should resemble the loading area at the extra-space storage facility located at 1315 Beverly Road in McLean, Virginia. The McLean Extra Space Storage Facility has a deep-drive aisle inside the building footprint with loading spaces off the drive aisle and screened by an exterior facade. Furthermore, extending the drive aisle is feasible based on the total building footprint of the McLean Extra Space Storage Facility. More specifically, the building footprint of the extra-space storage in McLean is approximately 17,500 square feet. Approximately 4,000 square feet of that footprint includes a deep-drive aisle for trucks to adequately maneuver and nine parking and loading spaces. In contrast, the applicant's ground-level footprint is greater, approximately 25,000 square feet, and approximately 2,000 square feet of that footprint is dedicated for three parking spaces. So 3, 25 versus 17 and 9. In summary, I recommend extending the drive aisle into the building with the loading spaces off the drive aisle and screened by an exterior facade to minimize the adverse impact of our property and prevent Brandon Avenue Service Road from becoming a truck In regards to the number of loading spaces, I'm requesting staff to reconsider, or having the applicant reconsider recommending the reduction of the number of loading spaces for the self-storage facility from five to three, because five loading spaces inside the building loading garage is necessary, and I think it's practical as well. Five loading spaces inside the building loading garage are necessary to facilitate safe and efficient loading of storage items. Five loading spaces prevent customers from crossing the service road from the northeast parking area with storage boxes, hand dollys, moving carts, et cetera. Five loading spaces inside the building loading garage is practical, considering a storage facility's principal exterior activity, unloading and loading of storage items, should be in the closest possible area to, should be in the closest possible area to the storage facility itself. Furthermore, my understanding is that there will be two short-term parking spaces in the northeast parking area where people can unload their items. And if that's the case, the fact that the applicant tends to have these short-term parking loading spaces reinforces the practicality of five loading spaces inside the building loading garage. So in summary, on the number of loading spaces, five loading spaces inside the building will facilitate the safe and efficient loading, storage items, and ensure 100% of the loading of boxes, beds, cabinets, and other things happens near the facility and not across the street in the northeast parking area. And also, I think the engagement of the community through the Wish Program, oh, that sounds wonderful. I think with what you have there from a site, it's by far the best use. It's practical, but I think just the loading area needs some tweaking, based on my experience having to lease and own properties in your loading docks. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last listed speaker. Is there anyone here in the auditorium who would like to address this application? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to address this application?
Jake Capelletti, Clerk of the Planning Commission. There's nobody on the line.
Would the applicant like to rebut in any way?
I would, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the commission. I just would like to note that my client did speak with the speaker and talked about this and has been considering the items that were mentioned this evening, and I just want to go through them briefly. That loading area will have doors, it will be screened, and those will be screened when a, if a truck enters, then that loading door will be closed after that truck enters. It will not be kept open during the loading and unloading process, and that's for a couple reasons. That's for security, and it's also because of the conditioning of the space. So those doors will be closed, I would say, a majority of the time. The only time that they might be open is if it's very busy, which would typically be in the evenings or on the weekends, because these are typically used by, I mean, this self-storage is expected to be used typically by residents, and that's when they have the opportunity to take items in and out of their self-storage. So I do believe that that loading area will be well-screened, and it will not be an impediment to any leasing of space that is across the street. I would also note that the facility that's on Beverly Road in McLean is different. It doesn't have first-floor uses like this does. We do not have the room to circulate underneath the building, as was suggested, and we do believe that three loading spaces are indeed sufficient. The operator of this building has a lot of experience, as I mentioned, and so for facilities of this size, they do believe that those three loading spaces will be more than adequate. So I appreciate the comments that we heard tonight. There was also, excuse me, another request that we add some shrubs to supplement some trees that we're planting, and we did agree that we will do that. And so we're happy to address that between Planning Commission and Board. Again, I think that there's no need to defer this application any further. I think we've worked very hard on this design, and it's the best design for the property. So I would be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Strobel. Any closing comments from staff?
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Lagana, any?
No, I mean, I don't think there's any, I would not want short-term parking in a loading dock either. I would want short-term parking, candidly, to be outside, so if someone has to carry a box inside, they're not in a garage where there supposedly might be a truck. Though I don't, I appreciate the comments, I don't believe that we're dealing with a truck corridor. It's like an active warehouse. I think that we saw the traffic analysis, and I think it's, and staff, and we, and staff has done the analysis in their report, and I think that's adequate for me. Though, however, I do appreciate the concerns raised, but I do believe, too, that the applicant has sufficiently addressed these.
Okay, very good. This, I'll now close the public hearing, and Commissioner Lagana, back to you. Do you have a motion?
I do. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before I get started, I'll just preface by saying I'm going to add a sentence with respect to adding runoff reduction in water quality performance shown on Sheet 9, as referenced by Commissioner Cortina as part of our recommendation, and just want to notify the commissioner of that. Okay. So I'll be making one, two, three, four, five separate motions. So I'll be making one, two, three, four, five separate motions this evening, Mr. Chairman. First, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve RZ two thousand twenty-two dash LE dash zero 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 two-four and the associated conceptual development plan subject to the execution of proffers consisted with those dated July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lagana, seconded by Commissioner Bennett. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I further move that the stormwater management, that the site stormwater management conform with the runoff reduction in water quality performance shown on sheet nine. Or, excuse me, I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the stormwater management, that the site stormwater management remain, remain consistent with the runoff reduction in water quality performance shown on sheet, sheet nine, C-nine, excuse me.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lagana, seconded by Commissioner Cortina. All those in favor, is there any discussion here? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I further move that the Planning Commission approve FDP two thousand twenty-two dash LE dash zero 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 two-four.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lagana, seconded by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I further move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the parking reduction request pursuant to subsection three, thirty-one oh-two point three, point E, point two, point B of the zoning ordinance based on the advancement of revitalization goals for the commercial revitalization district as set forth in the comprehensive plan, including economic vitality, appearance, and function.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lagana, seconded by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Lastly, I further move that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the requested modifications contained in the handout dated July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lagana, seconded by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's see if I can get this third one correct. Before us, the next item before us is a public hearing for PA two thousand twenty dash Roman numeral three dash U P one, Reston Comprehensive Plan Study. And this is in Hunter Mill District. There is no affidavit for a comprehensive plan amendment. But we, we do have staff with us who will now highlight the key milestones leading to tonight's public hearing and will summarize for the commission the changes that have been made, that they recommend to be made to the Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment in response to the first public hearing that took place on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. May we have a staff summary, please? Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm St. Clair Williams of the Department of Planning and Development. And along with me is Chris Caperton, Deputy Director of the Department of Planning and Development, along with staff members from the staff team who have been a part of this amendment process. As Commissioner Anjelski accurately mentioned, a full staff presentation was provided at the original public hearing on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And tonight, I'll be providing an update of the most recent updates to the amendment process. And the staff will be available to answer any questions. So as was mentioned during the original presentation, the Reston Area Comprehensive Plan includes all of the area within the planned community of Reston, which is currently highlighted on the map shown in the red boundary. The bullets on the slide also highlight just some of the specific areas within the planned community of Tysons, including the PRC areas, the Village Centers, the Transit Station areas or TSA areas, as well as the Transit Oriented Development or TOD district areas within Reston. And the plan amendment proposes to update the comprehensive plan guidance for the entirety of the Reston community. As a refresher, there was extensive community engagement that has been taking place during this process, including virtual and in-person community meetings hosted by the Hunter Mill District Office. There is also meetings with civic associations within the Reston area, as well as multiple Planning Commission workshops, as well as staff presentations to the Board of Supervisors Land Use Policy Committee. Just to go over some of the recent updates with the application, the original staff report for the comprehensive plan amendment was published on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Following the publication of the staff report, staff received comments regarding the draft proposed plan. And in response to some of the comments received, a staff report addendum was published on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Following that, the public hearing again was held on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. During the public hearing, spoken testimony was provided, and following that, written testimony was also received. In response to the spoken and written testimony provided, following the public hearing, staff proposed additional modifications to the proposed plan, which were released to the public on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Regarding the staff report addendum, again, it was to supplement the original staff report based on comments received following the publication of the staff report. And the addendum included approximately thirty-four proposed modifications ranging from editorial corrections to plan language clarification. Again, as I mentioned, based upon the testimony provided at the June fourteenth public hearing and subsequent written comments, staff released the additional proposed staff modifications to the plan on July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. The following three slides will kind of go over the specific modifications included in those proposed modifications that were issued on July twelfth. It included adding new photographs submitted by Commissioner Carter, as well as text references to those photographs. It also included clarifying that up to thirty dwelling units per acre is appropriate for the Reston Town Center TSA Central Sunrise Valley non-TOD district because portions of this non-TOD district are within the half-mile of the Reston Town Center station platform. The graphic here highlights, again, the Central Sunrise Valley non-TOD district. And this comes from the board-endorsed guidelines for development in the Reston Transit Station areas. It highlights the boundaries that are consistently used for designating this specific district. And as you can see, it does not include any golf course area within this sub-district. Further modifications, including correcting the reference to the wetlands in the Herndon Station TOD sub-district, noting that it is private wetlands. Modifying language indicating that along Sunrise Valley Drive, new buildings should have a setback that provides for space, excuse me, provides space for safe, convenient, and attractive pedestrian and bicycle facilities. It also included adding clarification in the stormwater management section that according to the resilient Fairfax Plan, urban flooding is common in Fairfax County, including portions of Reston, and occurs when rainwater overwhelms the county's stormwater manage, stormwater drainage systems, particularly in areas that are low-lying, lack sufficient stormwater infrastructure, or have high levels of impervious cover. It also included editing the stormwater management guidelines to provide a combination of runoff volume reduction and peak flow and velocity reduction to the extent feasible to protect downstream water resources, even where runoff would be discharged directly into a pipe or constructed channel. And editing, excuse me, editing the test to add references noting that the Reston Association owns, operates, and maintains one thousand three hundred and fifty acres of, of space within Reston. Based on the review and evaluation of the proposed plan and comments received both before and following the, the public hearing, as shown in the staff report, as modified in the staff report addendum, and the additional staff proposed modification dated July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, staff recommends approval of the Reston Comprehensive Plan Amendment as proposed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes tonight's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Williams. That was an excellent summary, both of the history and also changes that have been made since the first staff report. And so appreciate that. There is no applicant to make a presentation for a proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, so I do turn to the commissioners for any questions of staff. Now, unless there's an objection, I'd ask that the commissioners use this time to ask clarifying questions, but hold off on discussion of the merits of this plan amendment until after we hear from the public. Is there any objection to that approach? Any questions of staff to clarify what you've heard? Commissioner Cortina?
Thank you, Chairman. So I did confirm with staff prior to this hearing, and I just wanted to, to make that available for anybody that might be listening. So the bicycle map update, they did clean that up a bit, but it's, it's the same map. So it's not changed the map at all.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. And then the other, one of the other items that I had asked about was the urban park standards and clarifying these secondary uses like half of the landscape panel. And as we discussed, that is already in the guidelines. Maybe you can elaborate.
So yes, Park Authority Staff was able to provide some feedback in that. And what they noted is that the urban parks framework, which is an appendix to the Parks and Recreation Policy Plan Language, it sets the guidelines for urban parks in the urbanizing and redevelopment, revitalizations throughout Fairfax County. And there is language in the guidelines that notes that secondary features such as building entries, sidewalks, and such should be separate from the urban, urban, urban park space. However, discussions with both Fairfax County Park Authority staff and DPD staff has noted that there are cases during the review process, you know, based on certain characteristics of the development constraints. There are certain, on a case-by-case basis, there are times where sometimes those areas are included in urban park space. I think that's something that is, again, reviewed and evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Park Authority Staff also noted that with the ongoing policy, policy plan amendment process, there is an opportunity to review those urban parks framework guidelines and see if there are any necessary, you know, revisions to, to address the urban park concerns that you raised.
Okay, so it's already in there. It's, and it was highlighted in the Reston Plan. It's just that it said secondary features, and it didn't really say what those were. So you'd have to look that up. But in terms of staff being able to evaluate every Reston application, you, you know, it's a matter of enforcement because it's already on the books for the comp plan overall. So that's why you don't see any change from me on that point. I believe those are the only real outstanding questions that I had.
Commissioner Carter, is this a question?
Just briefly, on, following up on Commissioner Cortina, I, I do think we need more clarifications. I don't think it belongs in the comp plan. I think it belongs in the, in the guidelines of those park standards. We've had, in the last two weeks, we've had an issue about that on separate projects. The other thing I might say, that there's always this, I'll call a creative tension between Fairfax County Park Authority and RA. RA is, wants to make sure that the Parks Authority doesn't, is not telling RA what to do. The RA is welcome to do whatever it is that they welcome to do as long as it's not in conflict with Fairfax County Park Authority. So just, that, that's not the intent of the plan, is to be putting a thumb down on, on RA. I think I've said that right. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have six listed speakers. The first listed speaker is Jan Delucian, who is representing the Ivy Oaks, Ivy Oak condominiums. Mr. Delucian has ten minutes. And Mr. Kevin Richards, you're next up on the phone, so you don't need to come down. And Etura Pisano is also on the phone, will have five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I have a mild brain injury, so.
Take your time.
When I'm on the phone, I can read it verbatim.
We're, we're here for you.
Most of my questions for staff are based on the summary of testimony. My first, okay, I have to say complaint, is that my logged testimony, number seven, simply referenced the North Shore Connector, but I had additional comments regarding density and affordable senior housing. So just as a, and I'd sent in the documentation from my phone testimony as requested, so complaining, sorry.
That's okay.
The density credit, I noted, I, additional research, I noted that in the Z mod, section twenty-one oh-two E, maximum density and intensity address the concerns that I had raised for density credit. My question is, given that they're in there and, and to ensure clarification in the RCP, I don't know why adding the cannot be included in the credit calculations after the stormwater management and the open space regarding non-man-made created. Sorry, there's a fancy phrase for it in the thing. But I don't know why that small phrase can't be added there to ensure there's no issue with clarification. My, I do have a question on item four. It's, I believe it's confirming that staff determined that the North Shore.
Ma'am, you're directing.
Sorry.
And we'll, and any questions, we'll, we'll direct to staff, but you'll need to talk to us.
Sorry. That it seems like staff has determined that the connection is needed, and there were a number of comments on the North Shore connection, the reason being that it's a collecting roadway. Is that a correct understanding of the resolution for the connector?
We'll, 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 we'll address that, but just finish your, your statement, and we'll, I believe that we will be addressing that.
Okay. Fourteen B, it believe, I believe it's confirmed as American Dream Way, not being considered a public roadway and able to be private. But American Dream Way has the North Shore Connector attached to it. So that seems a little contradictory. And my last, no, actually, the last one is number eight I, where it's talking about affordable units. The response from staff says at the end, new affordable housing as WDUs and ADUs. WDUs are more affordable. ADUs are meant in the old Article Two as a low and moderate income. So WDUs won't support the need for ADU housing for low and moderate income. Many people have lived in Reston for many years. I'm going on thirty, and now handicapped and will eventually become senior. And even at this point, it would be impossible for me to stay in Reston if it weren't for a few other things like the tax relief credit, which is, thank you very much. a few other things like the tax relief credit, which is, thank you very much. But it's my concern that it doesn't fall into the initial plan. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much for taking the time to be with us this evening, and we will address that, not immediately. Our next speaker is Kevin Richards, who is on the phone. Mr. Richards?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time here. Are you going to start my five minutes now?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to say good evening to everybody and staff and members of the public physically present, or those like myself listening in or watching on their TV, mobile device, tablet, or computer. Mine went down for a little bit, so I lost you, but I'm glad I got back in time. As you can all see, the new world is changing with how we communicate electronically. But if there is still an old Reston that can and should be allowed to exist as part of the new world, within a scenic byway, within nature, walking, running biking trails, streams, rivers, ponds, lakes, wildlife, and birds, for both old and young people to enjoy. My wife and I moved to Reston from Arlington, Virginia, because it appeared to be the best of both worlds here in Reston. The vision that Robert Simon had, we believe, is a great vision, and I'm sure there are many other voters in Reston that still believe in this. We have a unique and diverse community. This quality of life is not about how much money you make, what fancy car you drive, or large home you own. It's about sharing the wealth of the beauty around you every day with neighbors and community for each and every one of us to enjoy. This Reston Comprehensive Plan needs to be revised, not to allow developers to abuse the current density credit. Developers don't even live here. They don't wish to be part of the community or part of the Reston Association and pay their fair share of taxes or association fees. There is clearly something drastically wrong with this statement, don't you think? As a result of developers' actions, our quality of life in old Reston or Reston as a whole will diminish greatly. The purpose of the Reston Comprehensive Plan and of the 20 units per five acres density calculation is to maintain the green space that underpins much of the Reston, fair fact, quality of life for which we are duly paying our rightful share of taxes to the county and the Reston Association, where they charge fees. Developers, being able to abuse the density credit is a perversion of that intent. It allows them to avoid any maintenance of the said land that they own. It simply allows them to profit after destroying and moving on, while impoverishing all of our quality of life for which we enjoy every single day. We encourage you, we urge you, we request, and we ultimately demand that the Commission please close this loophole by the simple addition of language that prevents developers from including unbuildable space in the density credit calculation. I am hopeful that you will be the faithful stewards of these precious resources surrounding us, for all of us the benefit, not simply for the developers to benefit financially. We do not need new road, a new road from Sunset Hills to North Shore Drive. It won't be safe to cross the road. There'll be more traffic, more pollution, more delays, and it will just be people having a quicker route with a chance of more accidents, and perhaps even worse than that, besides congestion. As with life in general, we all need a balance, a work-life balance. Compromise. Could we not make this work with a balance that satisfies both parties? Isn't life better when we share and stop abusing a situation presented to us? The world around us is in disarray. A war still rages in Ukraine and Russia, which affects us all, even though you may not think so. Inflation is still around. A world food crisis is on the horizon. The planet continues to suffer with severe heat and cold extremes, as we all know and as we see in the news. We need to use our natural resources carefully and wisely. Please look into your conscience and understand that the decision you make will have a far greater effect on your children and your grandchildren. Green space needs to be saved, and you all could be saviors. Otherwise, we will be in more difficulty economically and especially environmentally, in both the near term and the long term. Thank you all very much for your time, and also thank you for your public service. I wish you a pleasant summer and the rest of the year. Just one thought to finish with.
Please finish, sir.
Remember, whatever is loved is never lost. But if we love the green space, and if we lose the green space, it will be lost forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Etori Pisano. You have five minutes. Are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hey, I appreciate the opportunity to express my thoughts and opinions, and I want to make it clear that I'm speaking only for me and my family as citizens of Reston. I'm not representing any other building people or any businesses or anything like that. Anyway, we've lived in Reston since 1981, and both of us are retired Fairfax County educators. We moved here, like I said, in 81. We raised two children here, graduated from FCPS, and one who continues to live here. One of the main reasons we chose to live in Reston, aside from the fact that it had an outstanding school district, was because of Simon's dream that Reston would always retain its residential feel, and even businesses would have to be part of that concept. And so, we liked that idea. So, that's one of the main reasons we chose to live here. But again, you can only take a ride down on Spring Street and see the new, what I call Tyson's Corner skyscrapers. And this is only one area of Reston that has been dramatically changed, and to me, from its nose at the residential feeling that was supposed to be Reston. So, again, a simple drive around the area can validate that statement. But that said, my question would be, who's going to help retain Reston as a community where people can continue to live comfortably instead of trying to live in a booming business area with massive non-residential buildings? City living is what we wanted. We would have chosen DC closer to various cultural things. Anyway, somewhere along the line here, these changes were approved by our elected officials. And I just question, what happened to the concept of Reston, the original concept? And are we being represented, or are officials representing the big businesses? Anyway, the thing that I'm concerned right now, since I live right near the public development where Sally Mae used to be, is this new road going up to North Shore Drive. And I don't know how I can handle a new onslaught of traffic without becoming congested, you know, as you come down North Shore Drive, which is really a residential area there. You see school bus stops all the time, kids getting out and whatever. And this is getting more and more congested. And so, anyway, the loopholes in the Reston Comprehensive Plan allow developers to include property that can be developed, which is a deception because it's not really working with the density calculation. So, some changes need to be implemented if the town of Reston is to continue as a place where people can live in an uncrowded residential community. So, I don't know what I can do or say to change this progress regardless of its negative effect, but it just concerns me as one who's been here for 41 years and seeing the changes, some good. I'm not saying everything is bad with progress, but you have to look at in terms of people living here too, not just the developers making money, as they seem to do any chance they get. You know, this is like with the town center, when they decided they could get more money from charging parking and all that, you know, businesses have gone out of there. I don't go to town center unless I walk up there. I can go to the movie up in Herndon or Fairfax County, down at the mall at Fair Oaks or whatever, without the nonsense of paid parking. Anyway, that's just my thoughts, my opinions, and I appreciate the chance to express them. Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time to express them. Next up is Lynn Mulston, representing the Reston Citizens Association. You have 10 minutes, followed by Dan Harris and Gray Wells. Both of you will have the opportunity to speak. Dan Harris for five, and Mr. Wells for 10. Good evening.
Oh, my goodness. Who did that?
It's magic.
Thank you, Jacob. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Carter, planning commissioners. My name is Lynn Mulston. You all know me by now. First, I want to thank you all for suggesting that there is no need to testify again if we already testified on June 14th. But the latest three-page document of modifications distributed by staff five days ago continues to chip away at the planning principles and the integrity of the Reston Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, the second sentence of the July 12th document reads, "Based upon the testimony provided at the June 14th, 2023 public hearing and subsequent written comments, staff supports the following additional recommended modifications to the plan." So, upon reviewing the playback from the June 14th testimony, county staff has opted to ignore the wishes of Reston citizens, especially as it pertains to the conceptual connector road between Sunset Hills Road and North Shore Drive using private American Dream Way. This one request from many residents is missing from the suggested modifications. The community perception will be that these new modifications are developer-driven. I think you've probably heard that tonight already. But the last time that I reviewed the organization chart, the organization chart of Fairfax County Government, residents, let me emphasize, residents are at the top of that chart. So, I do want to acknowledge and our appreciation for county staff's inclusion of photos, and I was glad to see them shown tonight, but there were no photos attached to the modifications that we received. So, the citizens are not able to review those photographs. So, if we could have a follow-up to at least point citizens where they might be able to review the photographs that staff is going to be adding back into the comprehensive plan, we would appreciate it. Now, for the textual changes, there are issues with the modifications that follow. And all of the page references that I'm going to be mentioning are going to pertain to Appendix A of the staff report dated May 24th, 2023. So, the first modification, and this is Town Center's Central Sunrise Valley District, non-TOD, mixed use. This is page 32. There is an added text at the end that reads, "For the area within one-half mile of the Reston Town Center Station platform, residential use up to 30 dwelling units per acre is problematic." Reston Citizens Association requests that either the 30 dwelling units per acre be placed in the TOD portion with a boundary of one-quarter mile, or clearly state that Reston National Golf Course, which a portion falls within one-half mile, it's .42, is not eligible for development. Let me repeat. Reston National Golf Course, which a portion falls within one-half mile, is not eligible for development. The next modification, excuse me, this is regarding Sunrise Valley Drive on page 88. There is language that is deleted, and this is in the sentence that reads, "New buildings should have a setback of a minimum of 50 feet to provide space for safe, convenient, and attractive pedestrian and bicycle facilities." The minimum of 50 feet has been deleted. RCA, Reston Citizens Association, acknowledges that this 50-foot setback is desperately needed if Sunrise Valley Drive is to be substantially improved to provide a tree-lined boulevard with open spaces. And what about the cycle track? I don't know how you provide a cycle track without 50-foot setbacks. Reston Citizens Association requests that the minimum 50-foot setback be returned to the Comprehensive Plan text, Appendix A of the staff report dated May 24th, 2023, page 88. The next modification, stormwater management, on page 95. There is added text, which we think adds to this section regarding the resilient Fairfax Plan. However, the text that specifically pertains to Reston that reads, "Stormwater runoff in Reston from impervious surfaces is substantial, particularly on sites that have been developed without modern stormwater protections. The Reston Association State of the Environment Report, RASER, indicates that inadequate storm management is one of the most pervasive environmental problems in the Reston community." That text has been deleted, and we feel that Reston Association, or Reston Citizens Association appreciates the added reference to the resilient Fairfax Plan, but observes the appearance of a significant resource for local environmental reporting is being swept under a rug. Factual reporting from the Reston Association State of the Environment Report accurately states that inadequate stormwater management is one of the most pervasive environmental problems in the Reston community. This fact should be brought to light, and measures need to be enacted to remedy the situation, not cover it up. It is requested that the two stricken sentences be restored to Appendix A of the staff report dated May 24th, 2023, page 95. Another example of chipping away at the integrity of the Reston Comprehensive Plan is presented in the very next modification, and this is stormwater management, page 96. The statement includes, reads, "Provide a combination of runoff volume reduction and peak flow and velocity reduction, to the extent feasible." RCA requests that catchphrases such as "to the extent feasible" be avoided in the plan as they only serve to weaken the planning principles and guidelines that have established Reston as a world-renowned planned community. Please remove the addition of "to the extent feasible" from Appendix A of the staff report dated May 24th, 2023, page 96. Finally, RCA respectfully requests that this testimony be added to that provided in person on June 14th, 2023, and the subsequent written follow-up with a timestamp of Friday, June 23rd, 2023, at 1:43 PM. Again, RCA acknowledges and appreciates the work of county staff to try and accommodate all the requests that have been received and the incredible work that you, Commissioner Carter, and the planning commissioners have devoted to the Reston Comprehensive Plan. We trust that you will ensure the voice of the community, including the residents, is well reflected in the final product. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Dan Harris, who has five minutes. Come on down, sir. And Gray Wells for Charter Oaks Town Homes, if you'll come down and be ready. You will have 10 minutes. Mr. Harris, welcome.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, thank you very much. Dan Harris, and I'm just a citizen and... Dan Harris, and I'm just a citizen and representing myself and my family. I reside in Reston in the Charter Oak Town Homes cluster of what I call in historic Old Town Reston right off of North Shore Drive. And my comments pertain specifically to the North Shore. I'll call it the cut-through versus the connector. So I was born and raised in this county, educated grades one through 12, through a master's degree at George Mason University. I served 41-year professional career here and have retired and chose to remain in Fairfax County and in Reston specifically. I've served and had many meetings in this building on a board with former Chairwoman Sharon Boliva many years ago, and certainly respect her and what she has done and the commission has done over the years in building this county. So I'm very proud to live here and be part of this community. So I do understand how the county has progressed and evolved over the past 60-plus years. What I do not understand is a recommendation at a staff to approve a cut-through from Sunset Hills to North Shore Drive. Have they not walked North Shore Drive during rush hour, school bus times, and seen the traffic and what goes on in and out and around that road? Have they not looked at the evening rush hours when you're out there and you see what's going on on North Shore Drive specifically adjacent to Charter Oak Townhouse Cluster? I do. I see that every day when I walk my dog in the morning and in the evening. The placement of this cut-through is at the worst possible location. It's in a curve with a hill that frequently has speeding vehicles, has a pedestrian crosswalk right there, has a commuter bus stop, has cars parked on the curb, which is what was designed for a residential street, which is what North Shore is, and also has two golf cart crossings. I cannot think of more obstacles and potentially dangerous hazards in that one stretch of North Shore Drive where they are proposing to put a cut-through. The cut-through is a bad idea. It will only lead to more significant problems and potential injuries, after which other citizens are likely to be back here in front of this commission asking for something to be done about it. So I respectfully ask that we do something now and stop the cut-through to North Shore Drive, eliminate that from the amendment to the Reston Comprehensive Plan update to make that a safer residential street, which is what was planned as North Shore Drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gray Wells. Ms. Wells, you have 10 minutes. You're representing the Charter Oaks Town Homes.
I am.
Take your time.
Someone left a water bottle here.
Yeah, let me get my water bottle from her.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Gray Wells. I was raised in Reston. I moved to Reston in 1970 when my parents found Reston and decided to raise their four children there. Dad retired from the Army and got a job with the Reston Association. I was raised in Charter Oak Cluster, where my husband and I now live. I can see my old childhood home off of my back deck. I'm back tonight to voice Charter Oak Cluster's opposition over the connecting of Sunset Hills via American Dreamway directly to North Shore Drive. North Shore Drive is a residential road. North Shore Drive is a resident, a neighborhood road in Old Reston. This residential road connects neighborhoods, apartments, townhomes, single-family neighborhoods. This residential road is not and should not become a commuter-traffic cut-through road. This residential road is where individuals living in the neighborhoods must park when their cluster lots are full. The developments were built in the 60s and 70s, one-car, maybe two-car families. Well, nowadays, you know, just my family, we have four cars, so you have to park on the street. The street parking narrows the road, making it more dangerous with additional traffic. It's already a safety hazard to our neighbors who park on the road. Opening doors to get in and out will become more difficult if we add more traffic. This two-lane residential road is busy enough. This connection would become, with this connection, it would become unbearable and unsafe. The county should be looking at how to make North Shore Drive safer, how to slow motorists who pass you as you're driving down the road going the speed limit. They pass you in the wrong lane to get passed. We don't need to be adding more speeding traffic. This residential road has few straightaways. It turns this way and that way, and where the staff suggests connection is in one of those curves, as Dan Harris just said. This residential road is not only used by motorists, but by bicyclists. Bicyclists already have issues riding between the parked cars and the moving traffic. The dangers to the bicyclists will increase. This residential road and the sidewalks along it are used and crossed by children to see friends in other neighborhoods, to get to the tennis courts or the basketball court, or to go to our neighborhood pools. Connecting this residential road to Sunset Hills would create a more dangerous situation for pedestrians crossing North Shore. My husband and I walk across it every day, walking our elderly dog. This residential road is crossed by golfers, as Mr. Harris said, to get to six holes of the golf course. It's a terrible proposal that would make it more difficult for them to cross. Adding more traffic to a residential road will make it more difficult for residents to get out of our neighborhoods because of the increased traffic. In closing, this principle, this proposed connection is dangerous. This proposed connection will destroy our neighborhoods. Keep commuter traffic in the commercial TSA corridor and main arteries, not on residential North Shore Drive. Relieving congestion on commercial streets by moving traffic onto a neighborhood street is a dangerous, terrible, horrible, no-good, very bad, rotten idea. Do what's right for Reston and our residents. Don't allow the connection. Please kill this proposal now. Thank you.
I thought that was only relevant to Australia. That was, Ms. Wells completes our six listed speakers. Is there anyone in the auditorium who would like to speak to the Commission on this Comprehensive Plan Amendment? Seeing no one, is there anyone on the phone?
Jake Capelletti, Clerk of the Planning, which there's no one on the line.
Thank you. Staff, are there any final comments that you have?
No comments at this time.
I will now close the public hearing. Commissioner Carter, are you ready to act tonight, or are you wishing to defer consideration?
I'm ready to act tonight, but I do have some comments that we might ask staff before we close the record.
Well, the hearing is closed.
Okay. I'll still ask the questions.
But you're obviously able to ask your questions.
Yes. Why don't we respond to some of the testimony more directly?
I'd give the floor to you, Commissioner. How you want to use it as your prerogative?
I'd just like to start from the top with the density credit. My thought is that's a zoning ordinance issue, so if staff could either tell me I'm wrong or come up with something else.
Thank you, William Malley, Department of Planning and Development. So the zoning ordinance determines how density is calculated and when open space is calculated and when there's a penalty. That is not a function of the Comprehensive Plan. It doesn't belong to the Comprehensive Plan. It certainly doesn't belong in the Stormwater Management section of the Reston Comprehensive Plan. Section 5100.2 talks about, talks about density, and the zoning ordinance does allow density credit for stormwater management bonds. It also allows density credit when a developer dedicates right-of-way, dedicates a school site, dedicates a public park, does tree save, or other aspects which you can't build upon. The zoning ordinance does talk about when there are environmental constraints on the site, when there may be a density penalty. Now, that's particularly, very specific in the ordinance. It's when you have more than 30% of that, and it's only for districts that are calculated by dwellings per acre. It does not apply to the PRC district. It does not apply to the PDC district. It does not apply to PRM district. It does not apply to FAR-based district. It's only for dwellings. That provision's been in the ordinance since 1978.
There've been a lot of court cases on this, including Supreme Court cases, about taking property without some compensation. But of course, the break on this is there's a density limit regardless of whether you're taking credit or not taking credit. There is a density limit, and oftentimes there's height or unit type limit that goes along with this. Okay, the next one was this Central Sunrise Valley Drive issue and the 30 dwelling units per acre. If you look at the maps, the boundary of that is very specific, and it's not the golf courses. Am I correct about that?
That is correct. That language is specifically, again, for the Central Sunrise Valley non-Toe district. It talks about that happens. That's just within that district, and the boundaries are very clear. There is no golf course area within that district.
And the half-mile distance is, only covers the front part of that parcel. I guess we could look at that, but I think it's clear enough in what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And there has been at least one project approved in that, which is already going to count against the 30 units per acre.
So yes, there was already a rezoning that was approved, and the density approved that would be, I believe it's 29 dwelling units per acre based on that approval.
The other issue.
Commissioner Cortina, you want to clarify or ask for clarification?
Ask a question on that. So as we know, the text overrules any kind of diagrams in the comp plan. Text rules. Is it in the text, or is it only on the diagram?
As far as the...
This issue with the golf course and the...
Yes, so there was language added specifically in the text for the Central Sunrise Valley non-Toe. It only applies to that district.
So you're not relying on this imagery?
No, no. This imagery actually is actually from design. We were just using this as an example to highlight the subdivision, but it is in the text.
It is in the text. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
Okay, next, and this involves judgment. This is the 50-foot setback along Sunrise Valley Drive. I actually probably put that in there myself at one time. Right, Bill? I probably did. This works for and against you on these issues. One person says, well, it has to be, how about 50, how about 49 or 48? Then you get in this debate. Somebody else goes, well, how about 55 or 60 feet? So it's very difficult to win this. I do have a follow-on motion coming up talking about the design guidelines. That's probably a better place to put this kind of dimension rather than being so precise in a comp plan. There's always this balance between how prescriptive you want to be versus how much flexibility. I do think once you put all the things that are required in there, the cycle track, the separation with the sidewalk, the building zone, the curb area, you're going to end up with something pretty close to 50, if not more than 50. And the notion is it's not supposed to be even 50 as a wall. There's supposed to be more setbacks beyond. It's not a consistent setback. So I don't know if you have a better thought, but I'm not troubled too badly, even though I put it in to begin with to do that. Any comment, Chris or Sinclair?
No comment. I think I agree with what you said. I think we wanted to allow for, again, flexibility on a case-by-case basis. As you mentioned, there are recommendations on cycle tracks and such that would also dictate the space that would be needed.
And again, it's not a consistent setback. There's going to be more setbacks than just the 50. Now, we had this RASER report, and I wasn't sure what to do with that. Could somebody answer that? That's getting beyond my expertise. This is where RA has a series of things that they do, that they require versus what the county requires. Is that, that's the issue, right?
Correct. The RASER report is the Reston Association State of the Environment Report, and it's a tremendous...
Would you mind introducing yourself just?
I'm sorry, this is Joe Gorney from the Department of Planning and Development. And the RASER, again, the Reston Association State of the Environment Report is a tremendous document that's put together by the Reston Association. The critique that we had in the first public hearing was that we typically don't cite community association documents in our Comprehensive Plan. Typically, we look at state, federal guidance, and so taking out the reference to the RASER and inserting the Resilient Fairfax was intended as a change that would keep us consistent with typical Comprehensive Plan language. And so that was the intent. It wasn't to diminish the importance of the RASER to the Reston Association and the larger Reston area, because there's great stuff in there. However, it was not generally in keeping with the comp plan. So that's why the language was changed.
But that doesn't mean RA can do whatever RAID does on these things, correct?
Absolutely.
As long as they're meeting them.
It provides guidance for those people in Reston who are part of the Reston Association.
Okay, then this word, "to the extent feasible," I think we're coming back to that perhaps in the motion, so I won't say anything about that now. What else? I do have a note from RA, and they said, John, will you read this into the... I'm not sure that's the way to do this. Their comments were here before.
Not knowing what it is, what is it that you want to...
Let me do it quickly. I'll do it. I'm not going to read it. I'll summarize.
Stated as, for the record, and just to summarize.
Yes, it's an email from John Farrell that I got three hours ago. And he had four items.
Sounds right.
What? Yeah. One was this issue of the convenience center. He's concerned that the lake house, which is RA-owned, is not a convenience center, which the convenience center, look, I don't think it impacts them. They own it. They can pretty much do what they want. What the book says or what the plan says right now, it's a community facility or it's office. I actually think that's better than the language that they're thinking of, which is just to say it's an RA property and we do get to do whatever we want. Those convenience center, there's four of them, and they're all different. Some of them have like a 7-Eleven. One of them has a Montessori school. Another one has a dentist. So they are convenience in the broadest sense of the term. So I would actually leave that one alone. Oh, we mentioned some of the facilities outside the Reston Plan, and, you know, we've been over that. I wouldn't change that. He's concerned about the, RA hasn't been mentioned as the trail network. Well, of course, they're a trail network, but, you know, the comp plan kind of stays away from RA without trying to decide what RA gets to do. So it kind of stayed away from that, and I think RA kind of would like a little more notion that they're alive and kicking, and I don't think the comp plan's going to help much with that. We all know that they're here. And then he had a concern about the 12 fields, that this was the Fairfax County Park Authority dictating to Reston that they should have 12 fields. I don't think we want to mess with that. That 12-field stuff has been around here since the first, since the beginning of time, and so I think we should just leave that the way it is. So I recognize I'm paraphrasing that quite a lot, but that's my attempt to answer. We did do two things for RA. We added a paragraph that talks about the relationship between RA and the PRC zone, the desire that they have to require people that aren't in the PRC zone to join RA. As we know, they're not part of the original covenants, and I don't think the comp plan can help much, but we have a little paragraph that we've added about that. We also added text about changing the zoning ordinance, and that is on the Work Program. If you remember, this was, there's a limit on what RA is allowed to do. Does a slide or a little jungle gym require going through a zoning amendment? And that is true now, but we're working on that, and that's on the Work Program. So we have done quite a bit for RA, perhaps not everything they would desire. So that's pretty much where I am.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, is there any other comment or question? Commissioners, is there any other comment or question before we get into the substance of the debate, if you will? Commissioner Cortina?
Thank you. As you may know, I did plan to move to change, to the extent feasible, which is generally associated with cost or convenience, to practicable, which means to be able to implement it into practice. And that wording is typically used in the other plans, like Tyson's Lincolnia, which has a strong stormwater component. But one of the testimony that we heard tonight was just to remove it altogether, and why was it added? Is there any response to having one or the other?
Commissioners, this is Joe Gorni from the Department of Planning and Development. Generally speaking, when we do refer to water in stormwater management in the comprehensive plan, we use the practicable, as you mentioned. So, we do like that, and that would be consistent with that. That little caveat there, it does recognize that this is a policy document. We're not trying to establish a standard that must be met in all circumstances. We do understand, I think there is a very, very strong push for that, to mention it in the comprehensive plan, regardless of that caveat to the extent practicable.
I'm sorry, the push is from where?
The push is from staff. The push is from the policy, I think, to say, for instance, we often use that in terms of one inch of retention. We do occasionally find circumstances where that may be very, very difficult to meet a particular performance criteria that is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. And so, having that caveat, does that weaken it? And perhaps, I guess you could look at it that way, but however, we as staff see that as allowing some flexibility to recognize unforeseen circumstances. Perhaps we're talking about a streetscape, a trail, a bicycle network, affordable housing, contaminated sites, whatever it might be, utility locations. And this gives us the flexibility to work with and to balance the county objectives to achieve them as well as we can on balance. So, at the end of the day, it does become a decision, a policy decision, but we do feel that that is probably wise to keep that in the comprehensive plan, to say that this is not a regulatory document, this is a guidance document, and...
So, what is interesting, because I always felt that it was a loophole, too, but in going back into the Chesapeake Bay supplement and the watershed plans and some of the recommendations for policy changes, it appears that the advocates for stormwater wanted, to the extent practicable, because it would actually push the developers to do more, that it was actually not a loophole, but a nudge, and they wanted it in there.
And I would also add that we as staff use that, we cite that frequently, and we do ask applicants coming through rezonings, show us your math, show us how you intend to meet this, show us if you cannot meet one inch as an example of retention, why not? What are you doing so far? So, it does become a discussion, and sometimes a very detailed discussion, but we use that language constantly to ask for further clarification of what is being proposed, and truly is that giving the county and the community everything possible.
Okay. So, with that, I'll make my motions to insert that language in a couple of places.
We have to have a main motion for you to be able to do that. Commissioner Sargent, I understand you're prepared to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to introduce that motion in just a moment in support of the Reston Comprehensive Plan Study, including its modifications as proposed. And this will establish the foundation for consideration, not only of the main motion, as well as consideration of proposed amendments to come from planning commissioners. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Plan Amendment 2020 Roman numeral 3-UP1, Reston Comprehensive Plan Study, as shown in the staff report dated May 24, 2023, as modified in the Staff Report Addendum dated June 13, 2023, and as further modified by the additional staff proposals dated July 12, 2023. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Sargent, seconded by Commissioner Olthaler and Murphy. This is the point at which, with a motion on the table, the commission deliberates on that motion and all the issues that is entailed in that. The motion is the base motion. It's the, it captures essentially all the staff's recommended changes, it captures the staff's original report as it was modified in the addendum, as it's been modified since the last public hearing. That's the base motion. And so, at this point, we'll deliberate on that base motion. I understand, Commissioner Carter, that you have some amendments you want to propose.
I do.
You want to start with this?
Yes, please do. Okay. I have three amendments. So, Mr. Chairman, before the final voting on the main motion, I also move to recommend approval of each of the following amendments. Number one, Mr. Chairman, I move to delete the street connection from American Dreamway to North Shore Drive, as shown on the maps on pages 82 and 83. Going along with that, I also move to delete American Dreamway as a grid street, as shown on the maps in pages 82 and 83, and retain the street as a local street.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Legano. Commissioner Carter, would you like to explain that motion at all?
I think we've heard enough tonight.
Okay.
I would be glad to, if you want it.
Is there any further discussion of that motion to amend the main motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the proposed amendments, it's a twofold amendment, in essence, to delete the street connection from American Way to North Shore Drive. All those in favor of the proposed two amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? That motion carries.
Okay, my second amendment. Mr. Chairman, I move to update the note shown on Figure 22, Wheelie Local Street Grid for the Association Drive area, to state, see Land Use and Heritage Resources chapters for recommendations, and add the same note to Figure 22. This is an issue in the Association Drive area.
Hold on a second. Finish your motion, please, and it needs to be seconded, then we'll discuss it.
That's it.
Second.
And just to clarify, it's Figure 21?
It's Figure 21, yeah.
And it's not 20, so it's, you're moving to...
21 and 22. So, on both.
Very good. And it's been moved by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Legano. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion to amend the main motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? That motion carries.
Amendment number three. Now, this, Mr. Chairman, I move to delete the first bullet under residential on page five of the draft plan, as indicated in the addendum.
Hold on a second. It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Cortina, and what does this do for the main motion?
Okay, this is a sentence. It's in the highlight section of the residential. Now, the first part of this says, we want housing for everyone in Reston. It's pretty much as cryptic as that. This bullet follows it. Now, this bullet's been edited several times, and the more we edit it, the worse it gets in terms of clarity. So, I think the best thing to do is just delete it altogether. It's about, it started out as allowing multifamily units within a half-mile of the metro station. We don't really need to stay that. The land use plan already says that. And then, somebody came back and said, well, why is it just a half-mile? Why can't it be wider than that? Why can't it be in the rest of the area? And then, some people say, well, yeah, but that's the industrial area, and we have a hospital, and we have the RA warehouses there, and we have two data centers. Why would we have multifamily in there? And why is it just multifamily? Why isn't it just townhouses? So, you can see how the story gets augmented, and we lose the point of the whole thing. So, I think just deleting that sentence, and it was testified, I think, two or three times at our last hearing. It wasn't, nobody brought it up tonight, but I think just deleting it is the best.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion of this motion to amend the main motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the third amendment proposed by Commissioner Carter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? So, that motion carries as well. Thank you, Commissioner Carter. And I'll move then to, I believe, Commissioner Cortina. You referenced that you wish to make some, a motion or two?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I move to replace "to the extent practical" with "to the extent practicable" in the Stormwater Management section found on page 96 of the staff report, and I further move to replace "to the extent feasible" with "to the extent practicable" in the latest staff recommended proposed changes to the Stormwater Management section.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cortina and seconded by Commissioner Legano and Bennett. Did you have any discussion you wanted to, any further discussion? Okay, very good. Yes, Commissioner Olthaler?
Yeah. This, I assume this appears in a number of places, so that the, that it currently says "extent feasible" in several places in there, is that in a number? Is that...
I don't believe so.
I don't think so. I think it's in the...
It's only there.
It's in the environment.
Just the two.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendments proposed by Commissioner Cortina signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Those motions carry.
Thank you.
So, any other consideration, any other motions that commissioners would like to make toward, any amendments to the main motion? All right. So, we've approved motions that were made to amend the main motion, so we'll now act on the main motion as it was amended.
As amended.
So, the motion is the main motion and as it has amended. Is there any further discussion that the commission would have on the main motion as it was amended? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the main motion as amended by the commission this evening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Okay, that, this is a completed activity, and I, what?
Basically, what we've done is we are recommending that the board approve the planned amendment as amended this evening by the planning commission.
That's what it means.
Yes, that is right.
Is there any other clarification or insight?
Well, there's more.
Of course, there is. But before we address those, I want to commend John Carter, you, our colleague. I think the Reston community knows how much you have invested in getting to this point, but certainly the broader community and maybe even our colleagues don't know the level of effort, the hours upon hours upon hours that you've put to facilitate the conversations within the community, then putting pencil to paper in the kind of intense level of professional effort you put into it. Also, the kind of coordination with, between you and the staff and the staff's own level of effort, which was in and of itself intense, not only between the commissioner and the leadership of the Reston or of 100 Mill District, but then your staff also had just a wide array of interaction with the community. In my mind, it's a classic example of the kind of quality of product that comes out of that level of interaction among the various parties, and I commend all parties to it.
Here.
Commissioner Carter, you have some additional follow-on motions you'd like to make?
I do. We're not ended yet, so, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add the following two follow-on motions. Number one, and you've heard this from me before, but this is about improving the connections to the Reston metro stations. And I'll just read it from my text here. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors direct the planning staff to continue to work with FC DOT, VDOT, FCPA, Dominion Power, and the landowners to establish design standards and guidelines for improving pedestrian and bike access to the Reston metro stations. Improve street lighting, new crossrocks, ADA accessible curb ramps, pedestrian refuge areas for streets with medians, bike lanes, appropriate bike lanes. Signal timing and pedestrian connections across the bridges over the Dulles Access Road should be addressed. Design of streets for on-street parking, pickup drop-off spaces for delivery vehicles, and on-street parking spaces to meet ADA requirements need to also be considered. Priority streets for implementation include Wheelie Avenue, and as you know, Wheelie Avenue is understudied now, for a look at this, Reston Station Boulevard, Town Center Parkway, Sunset Hills Road, Sunrise Valley Drive, and adjacent local streets. This work should be part of ongoing activities, such as the Wheelie Avenue Improvement Project and the Active Fairfax Transportation Plan. The completed work should eventually be added to the Guidelines for Development for the Reston Transit Station areas. Providing adequate and safe connections to the metro stations is a critical need.
Second.
Yes.
It's been moved by Commissioner Carter and seconded by Commissioner Cortina. Commissioner Carter, just a clarification, back in the listing of different considerations, you inserted the word "appropriate" in front of "bike lanes." Was that your intent?
Yes.
So, appropriate as part of that statement then, or as part of this motion? All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, the follow-on motion, one proposed by Commissioner Carter, seconded by Commissioner Cortina, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, my second follow-on motion is monitoring residential and non-residential development. Now, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors direct the planning staff to continue to monitor the relationship between residential and non-residential development to inform the review of pending SSPAs and other development plans. In the Reston plan, this relationship is designed to create a balance between jobs and housing that reduces the impact on traffic on the transportation system, provides adequate contributions to the silver line by commercial development, and establishes a self-contained new town. Because new developments in Reston could be prioritizing residential over non-residential development, monitoring will continue to be necessary to avoid significantly changing the land use relationships recommended in the Reston plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Carter and seconded by Commissioner Cortina. Commissioner Sargent, you said that you found a...
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, for the motion. I believe you said reduces the impact on vehicular traffic as opposed to impact of vehicular traffic.
Yes, I see. Okay, that's fine.
Add that amendment?
Yeah, that's just a clarification.
Yes.
Okay, and it's been recognized by the motion. Any discussion of this follow-on motion, number two? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And any abstentions? Motion carries. Anything else, Commissioner Carter?
I think we've kept people long enough tonight. There is a couple of things I would like to say, and I don't want to go too far on this. You know, we get to this point in the comp plan making, and everybody's looking for that. If I could just add this one sentence, it would change the world. Or if I just had another world, another word, it would just change the world. I refer to that as the "I gotcha" statement. I don't know who you're getting, whether you're getting staff or me, or Commissioner Natchezky Agner, or an applicant, but there probably is no such thing. Comprehensive plans are vision plans, and to parse the language that tightly, it probably is not the best use of it. I mean, in my experience here, the legal people would tell me, John, you can't recommend denial just because there are one sentence in the development plan. You've got to make sense out of it. So, I just wanted to say a little bit... So I just wanted to say a little bit about us up here. We live in a different world up here. We debate things back and forth. If there's something wrong, whether it's in the plan or not, if there was a mistake, if somebody missed something, and if they're so concerned about that, we're going to ferret that out and fix it in some way. Not disregarding the plan, but there's other ways to fix it. Text amendments or some other way. So we live in the house of reason, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And for those who perhaps didn't get that word that they wanted or that phrase, it's time not to be too concerned about that. And I did want to quote Commissioner Olafelder, where he usually says, well, there's no such thing as a perfect plan. And that's probably true. So that doesn't mean this isn't extremely important to us, and we pay lots of attention to it. But if there's something left out, something has not worked out, we're going to find it. And if we don't find it, there's sixty-three thousand people in Reston that will tell us about that. So, another thing, I think the accomplishments of this plan are pretty big. I think it was a tribute to Walter Alcorn to get this started, very trusting that we could all pull this off in some way, very trusting of even the Board of Supervisors of accepting Walter Alcorn's notion of redoing the Reston Plan. And everybody wondered what was going to happen. But here we are. We actually made it this far. And I wanted to go over a couple of things that we talked about. One, the simple things, words like "could," "should," "shall." There's some of that in this plan, but there's a lot less than it used to be. And this plan went from, I think it's a hundred eighty-five words, a hundred eighty-five pages. It's now a hundred forty pages. We must have done something without leaving things out. Even though it has a lot less words, we have more chapters. And then the chapters that are in there are significantly changed. The land use, we went through every land bay. We have new chapters, the equity chapter, community health, economic development. I know there's some people that perhaps didn't get everything they wanted in those chapters, but just because you have a chapter in the comp plan doesn't mean you suddenly have equity. It's about the land use decisions that you've made in the land use or the transportation or the parks. That's what's equity. It's not just because you have an equity chapter. The recreation, that is a very glorious chapter, I think. Last time, we kind of emphasized the twelve recreation fields. This time, we have that language in there. But we talked about signature sites, the kinds of parks that make community. These aren't always just the recreation things. These are the walking paths and those. So we have this new civic center, which is critical. We have the three miles worth of the expansion to the W N O D Trail. We have the fifty-foot setback area along Sunrise Valley, which is not just fifty feet, it's going to be varied, a whole park system that goes along that. That's part of the maturing of Fairfax County, I think, that we go beyond the recreation fields. But we have real signature parks that people are going to look at. Heritage resources, I think that was one paragraph in the last plan. We now have a much more robust area. We've got some challenges in that area. We're going to have one next week, actually, that's coming up. The Association Drive area that we talked about earlier, I hope that little bit of text change helps that. But also the Hunt Club. The affordable housing, we didn't have any affordable housing in the neighborhoods in the last plans. So now we cover all of Reston. Public art, which everybody likes, the public facilities are mentioned a lot. And last, I'm going to say, you know, Reston, to this point, has been a series of amendments. And most of those amendments have been freestanding. So we had what was called the industrial area along the Toll Road. We added a little smidgen of housing in the year 2000, I think. Had nothing to do with the rest of Reston. We added the Lake Anne Revitalization Plan in 2010. That was self-contained. Then we did the Transit Corridor in 2015. And then we did the neighborhoods in 2017. But we haven't done a whole plan for Reston in sixty years. This is the first time that's been done. And that was a major undertaking, I think, to be able to put that all together in one plan and try to treat areas differently, or the same, actually. So I looked at other planning areas, and it's surprising, I hope this is worth it, just to get a notion of how much was actually accomplished. Alexandria, the city of Alexandria, is about the same size as Reston, slightly smaller. I think it's nine thousand, and Reston has eighty-four hundred acres, depending on whether you count that little portion of Herndon or not. Now, Alexandria, they're working on the waterfront and Eisenhower Avenue is struggling with, just as we are, on the conversion from housing to residential. Did a fine job, probably on Route One. But we did that with Reston. It's the same area with a little more than a third of the population. So I think just the scale of that is pretty amazing that we were able to accomplish all that. So that's kind of where I wanted to end up. I am trying to end this on as positive a note as possible. I look forward to keep on going to the Board of Supervisors. And believe me, the projects are going to come rolling in, in the fall.
Commissioner Cortina.
John really should, Commissioner Carter should have the last word on this.
No, that's all right.
I'm just thinking back when the Board of Supervisors sent this to the Planning Commission, and they doubted whether this could be done. And I'm so happy to be here in this moment, that Commissioner Carter and the way that you've got this through the system and the staff, all this work that you have done since the Board of Supervisors sent it to the Planning Commission, the other planning commissioners who worked on this. And I really want to call out the citizens, because we have had a plan amendment or an entirely new plan for a place like Tyson's Corner, which was led by Supervisor Alcorn when he was on the Planning Commission, but nobody really lived there yet. This is Reston, where everybody lives, and everybody's involved, and everybody has an opinion about this place, which is amazing that they care so much. So I just want to give a special shout out to all the residents as well. Anyway, don't bet against everybody. It came through. So I think somebody's going to owe somebody, it was said in jest, but there was some sort of wager going on, and somebody lost it. Thank you.
Commissioner Olafelder.
I would, I also would like to add my recognition to Commissioner Carter's, what I call Herculean effort in very difficult problems and somewhat distrustful community to pull together what I consider to be a relatively fair and balanced plan for Reston. Reston's gone through a number of changes. A lot of the people who've testified moved to Reston before. We had the corridor with the development and the town centers and so on. And those were big changes. And they were not consistent with what some of the original residents thought was Bob Simon's views and his idea. And they have had real problems with it over time. But I think that this plan tries to balance those areas along with the rest of Reston with what I consider to be part of the, still very much part of Bob Simon's original vision. And I think that it involved a lot of the community. It involved the supervisors' effort. But mostly, I think, a lot of this involved Commissioner Carter's effort. And I think he earned the trust of the community, and I think he provided the leadership. You know, the fact is, when the first version of this arrived here and with the board, I wouldn't have voted for it. I wouldn't have voted for that first version. And it needed a lot of work. John and I talked, as he did with others. And, you know, he saw what the Board of Supervisors was saying at their committee meetings about the plan and about their doubts and their concerns. And we went, he went back, and he worked with staff, and he worked with the community to pull together what we have approved or recommended approval of this evening. And I think that that special effort and his leadership, and I think a lot of it comes from his own background and experience in terms of how to deal with planning and how to work with the community and how to make, pull together a plan that makes sense. And I really appreciate that, and I'm very happy to see where we are tonight. And we'll see what the board does with this next.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Olafelder referenced that he could not support the first version. That first version reflected a lot of what the task force aspirations were. And from the Board of Supervisors' perspective, the feedback we received was, hey, it's a good start, but you're using this as an opportunity to make policy for the broader county. And that can't, that's inappropriate. And so they were, the board was saying, scale those pieces back that for the Reston community were significant for Reston, the health part, the equity part, the environmental part, all those pieces that are critical from the task force's perspective. The task force may see it as being reduced in scope in the version that we're recommending to the board. But the thing, the reason I reference this is the point that the board was making and those of us on the commission were making as well, and that is that the policy, there is some significant changes that we need to make at the policy level, broad land use policy level, which is captured in what we call the policy plan of the comprehensive plan. That policy plan is now currently opened up by the board, authorized by the board. Staff is organized, a team, that team is also part of where the Planning Commission is integral to that overall effort. My point is that the policy plan of the comprehensive plan hasn't been changed in forty years. So we're now in the process of updating the policy plan. It'll probably take three to four years to ultimately finish it out because of the level of community involvement that we expect will be part of that process. But all the work, my final point here is all the work that the task force did to highlight areas that were important to Reston now have an opportunity to resonate in the broader policy planning process that we're engaged in right now. So it's, that work is not on the cutting room floor. It's now can be, help inform the policy plan process that we're engaged in right now. So you have anchors in this policy plan, I'm sorry, in the comprehensive plan for Reston that we're recommending. But you also have all that work you did that will help inform our broader process on the broader policy planning process. So anyway, kudos to everybody. Any final words of wisdom?
I'll just add one.
Commissioner Sargent.
For staff, I've had the privilege of working with some of these, Mr. Caperton and other big areas of the county. And the challenge is putting all the pieces of the puzzle together. And how you do that and still make the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan guidance work is complex, amazing, and you don't always have all the pieces at once. So I appreciate you helping to find all of the pieces. That makes this a particularly excellent plan in concert with Commissioner Carter and his team. Just amazing work. So thank you very much for your patience, your professionalism, and your perseverance. Thank you.
And Commissioner Sargent, thanks for making that main motion initially. I got it started. All right. So that concludes our consideration of the Reston Comprehensive Plan, amendment to the Fairfax County Comprehensive Plan. And that brings us to the end of our meeting of July nineteenth, 2023. Unless there is any other business that should be brought before the commission, seeing that there's no other business, we are adjourned as of nine fifty-four P M.